I'd like to call this meeting to an end with the salute to flag.
Oh, yeah. You're right.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Name the bad and the known.
In accordance with the open review side, I have mentioned to everyone as it is been provided as follows: On September 3rd, June 29th, and July 9th, the notice sent to the whole district you Star Ledger Local Source and the Central Public Enterprise by state law there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items on this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein as is allowed at a regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the sunshine law.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Viviana?
Prime.
Mrs. Birch?
Here.
Mrs. Hudeck?
Here.
Mr. Colvis?
Here.
Mrs. Ormon?
Here.
Mr. Strzala?
Excuse.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Here.
Mr. Alvarez?
Excuse.
Mr. Russell?
Here.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting committee of the whole held on May 21st, 2015. The special meeting, excuse me, the special meeting committee of the whole held on June 15th, 2015, and a work session and regular meeting held on June 22nd, 2015.
So moved.
Second. Uh, it's like Mr. Tapaleski and Mrs. Hudeck. Uh, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudeck?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ormon?
Yes, I'm all listed in the June meetings, I abstain.
Two June meetings.
Huh?
Two June.
Both the June meetings, but they were the same day, right?
No.
No, first June meeting, I always said the second June meeting was the regular meeting, I wasn't.
June, okay. Um, Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes. Comments from the public on agenda items only? Saying none, Superintendent Turek, I approve it, too.
Thank you, Mr. President. At first, I'd like to welcome our students from King University here tonight. We have students who are studying for their master's degree in administration and supervision, so we have future principals, future supervisors, future PAs, future superintendents here. Uh, and I know that they have some questions that they're gonna wanna ask our board members later about the process, and, uh, so I just wanna welcome you to Linden, welcome you to a Board of Education meeting, and, uh, hope you have a pleasant experience. As you all know, because I think you were all there, I think for the first time since I remember, we had every Board of Education member at graduation. Even one in a wheelchair.
That's me.
Hmm? Yeah.
So, on June 23rd, we had a very, really nice graduation ceremony where we gave out 428 high school diplomas. It was a really hot day, too, I think I lost a few pounds, which, which was good. So, I just wanted to make that known, that I think that was the first time that I can remember, uh, that we had all board members there, and I wanted to recommend you for that, I think that's important. I just received, uh, this from our international baccalaureate program. Uh, we had five students receive an international baccalaureate diploma this year. Uh, we had one student who missed by one point, so he'll, he'll get to take, uh, one of his exams over and hopefully get a diploma. So, uh, as most of the board members know, the public does know, international baccalaureate is a very rigorous program, it's the most rigorous program we've offered, uh, in the Linden public schools. Um, it's very prestigious and it's recognized throughout the entire world. Students with IB diplomas, uh, can choose many different colleges to go to, um, virtually for free. Uh, they also can get up to, we had once in our valedictorian two years ago, uh, who had an IB diploma, just for getting his IB, IB diploma, he started at Rutgers University with 24 college credits. It's very difficult to obtain. Out of 428 seniors, only five of our seniors did, so it really is difficult, but very, very prestigious, and we're very, very proud of these students. In addition to those students who received diplomas, we had 132 students receive certificates. These are students who didn't take the full IB diploma program, but who took IB courses, like AP courses, you take an AP course, you take a test and pass. So, we had 132 of our seniors take IB courses, pass those courses. In addition, they have to pass an external examination, which is then sent somewhere in the world to be graded by a professor, um, and it's graded on a 1 through 7 scale. We had 132 of our students who passed those tests, and for which their colleges will give them credit for. So, very proud of those students, too. Uh, I'd like to review with the board and the public tonight, uh, the district goals for the 2015-16 school year. As is always, um, our goal is to improve the academic achievement of students in all grade levels, in all demographic categories, uh, through the implementation of year one or five-year strategic plan. At our last board meeting, I presented to you our five-year plan. During these next five years, we're gonna expand our horizontal and particular, excuse me, vertical curricular articulation, uh, through the use of an online curriculum. We're going to expand, uh, our use of online curricular diplomas in all academic areas. Specifically, this year, we're implementing electronic textbooks in chemistry, physics, and math. Uh, we're gonna continue researching other electronic textbooks for the future, and I anticipate by the end of the 2017-18 school year, that our high school students, our secondary students will no longer have textbooks, they'll just have their natural chairs. In addition, another district goal this year will be to increase our opportunities for teachers and staff to participate in relevant and meaningful professional development opportunities that are driven by district and individual needs. As you know, we are very generous in the, uh, professional development we offer our Not only do I know that our staff appreciate that, but what they do appreciate is that when we give them something that's relevant to what they do every day. So, we want to increase those opportunities, increase those opportunities for job and professional development, that's a real goal we're on in this district. For technology, uh, we're going to continue our technology one-on-one plan with MacBook Air laptops. For leadership, uh, this year, I'm going to create a elementary and secondary advisory council made up of a variety of district stakeholders, including teachers, administrators, board members, students, parents, et cetera, to advise me on many different types of educational matters. Of course, the major district goal is always security, maintaining a state of a secure learning environment. Finance, as always, I will trust the company, uh, to help me operate this district in an efficient and effective manner. We'll continue to try to seek revenue sources to reduce the burden of property taxes, and we'll also, uh, have a goal to come in with a budget next year that is below the 2% property tax gap. And a major goal this year, which I talked a little bit about in our five-year strategic plan, is to cultivate our Linden public school brand. Uh, as you know, we, we created a new logo, created a new, uh, five-year strategic plan. These things are words and images. What we wanna do is we wanna start developing our brand, so that when people see our logo, it means something, that it means something positive. And we're gonna do that by incorporating our brand into all of our publications, all of our communications. It's going to be on all of our letterhead, it's going to be on your business cards, on my business card, it's gonna be everywhere. It'll be unveiled to our entire district on September 3rd for our district launch. We're gonna talk about the things that we love and the things that we value most here. It's gonna be a part of our brand, so that when people see our logo, they associate it with what we believe in here, what we believe is great about our kids, and about our staff, and about our district. Another way I wanna increase our parent community and public relations is through, uh, more electronic communication to parents, we just don't do well enough for that. So, I believe I'm gonna get every parent's email address, but I set the goal in, uh, well, I said it in the, I'm going to actively seek to obtain 100% of the parent party email addresses. I'm going to do that. We're going to increase our, increase our electronic communication. My, I get emails from my children's school district all the time, very informative, and I think it's important that we turn that corner here in them. We're doing that with our students, we're not quite doing that yet with our parents, including taxes. So, to, to do that. So, those are some of the district goals for this year for the board's approval. I did update you during the, uh, work session about our summer projects, but I'll update the public on, uh, school aid will be ready to go in September after the issues we had with our construction project there. Linden High School auditorium is underway. We have a completely renovated, uh, bright, beautiful new auditorium coming to, and, uh, you'll see it firsthand at our September board meeting. Uh, at McMathis Middle School, we did asbestos removal, uh, the entire first floor of the building with the exception of the auditorium. And at both McMathis and Soul Middle Schools will be air-conditioned auditoriums, having to be located for September. And school number five, we're installing a rubber playground surface, and that project is already underway. Finally, for my report, ladies and gentlemen, I'm required by the office, State Office of Fiscal Accountability, OFAC, to discuss the results of the investigation that occurred in Linden publicly at a board meeting. So, I'll be brief, but I am required to discuss this publicly. In March of 2013, the district self-reported an alleged HESPA security breach. The HESPA, as you know, is the High School Proficiency Assessment, which used to be the test that 11th graders took and had passed to regular announcement. In March of 2013, I was, uh, becoming superintendent, and, uh, at the time, two students reported to the high school principal that a staff member, Mr. Laguna, had helped them with math problems on the HESPA, which is a big, no, no. In fact, all staff members, uh, that are either proctors or examiners for the HESPA and all standardized tests, uh, receive training, at least two hours' worth of training, on what they can, can't do. One of the things you now have to do is give students answers to the test, because you have to be trained to know that. So, the two students came and what they said was that, you know, the test was given in the morning, and that Mr. Laguna taught them in the afternoon, and when he came into class that day, he drew problems on the board that were on the test, and he said, "Here are some problems that you may have had trouble with." So, tomorrow, uh, according to the students, Mr. Laguna said, "Tomorrow, uh, go back and when your teacher's not looking, change your answers." So, we investigated that. The next day, uh, Mr. Laguna was called down to the office by the principal, our director of assessment, uh, his union rep, he was questioned about it, uh, he gave a statement, uh, he was removed from proctoring of the test for the day, he was moved to an alternate We later found out, uh, from another student who came forward and reported that Mr. Laguna not only helped those students in his class, but that he actually gave her answers to the test written down on a piece of paper. And we confirmed her, her story by reviewing our video cameras, and we could see Mr. Laguna in the hallway, talking to her, giving her a piece of paper with the answers on it. She produced that piece of paper, and it clearly had numbers and had letters corresponding to answers. We were able to confirm with Department of Education that they were actual HESPA test questions and answers. Needless to say, the next morning, once I had that confirmation, Mr. Laguna was called into my office, I had a meeting with Margaret Miller, our board attorney, uh, Mr. Laguna's attorney, where Mr. Laguna was informed that, uh, I would be expecting his resignation immediately, or I would be filing tenure charges against him. After some brief discussion, uh, they sat in my office and they typed a resignation letter, where Mr. Laguna resigned for personal reasons. Now, anytime a staff member resigns in order to avoid tenure charges, it's the superintendent's duty and legal requirement to report that to the state. So, the next day, a letter was drafted that was sent to the Office of License, Shirt, and Credentials, recording that Mr. Laguna resigned to avoid tenure charges with the circumstances surrounding this investigation. Two years later, in April of 2015, investigators from the Office of Fiscal Accountability came to my office to do the investigation, uh, gave them all the evidence, of course, we're very cooperative, they did their entire report. Uh, Mr. Laguna happens to be working in another school district now, and, uh, the investigation shows that once we were informed of the breach, that we followed all the proper protocols, we notified all the proper authorities, we did exactly what we were supposed to do, including the fact that I reported that he resigned to avoid tenure charges. So, as far as the district was concerned, we did everything correct, but Mr. Laguna's gonna have some issues now. And that's, uh, basically it. As a result of their investigation, OFAC concluded that Mr. Laguna interfered with and influenced students' responses by divulging the contents of the secure materials to students, and, uh, they are sending a recommendation to the State Board of Examiners, where he may be, possibly have a hearing where they may strip him of his license, but that is not, there, not for us to, uh, decide. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Assistant. Uh, Attorney, reporter.
It says two items. Um, foremost, uh, by New Jersey statute and regulation, whenever amendment is closed out post the contact of the superintendent, the laws require that we hold a public hearing on that proposed amendment. At this time, the Board of Education and Dr. Overtose are mutually desirous of altering his existing employment agreement. There is only one material change to that agreement, and that's to change the duration. The agreement currently extends from July 1st, 2013, through June 30th, 2018. Uh, the parties are looking to change that term from July 1st, 2015, through June 30th, 2020. Mr. President, I, uh, ask for a motion to approve the public hearing on this proposed amendment.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And if anyone from the public would like to comment on the contract, we'll do so at this time.
I like. Saying none?
Motion.
I have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I also am requesting a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Linden Board of Education and the Linden Education Association for Meat and custodial personnel.
So moved.
Second, please.
Sorry, I'm second.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a roll call on that item?
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudeck?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ormon?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Abstain. Margaret Miller. And now, regular reports. Curriculum instruction, um, Viviana.
The curriculum and instruction committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendent, present the following 27 motions to Linden Board of Education for approval. Items 1 through 6 deal with the approval of specialized programs for placement of classified students, determination of out-of-district placements, the approval of payment for related services as per the child's study team evaluations, and the approval of Level 1 services from the Commission for the Blind and Visually Impaired. Item 7 approves the enrollment of two students in charter schools for the 2015-16 school year. Item 8 approves home instruction services provided by Silvergate Prep for Linden students admitted during the 14-15 school year. Item 9 amends board action on past CNI reports. Item 10 authorizes curriculum revisions. Items 11 and 12 approve an agreement between the Linden Public School District and King University for students listed to obtain field experiences under the head athletic trainer during the 2015-16 school year. Items 13, 14, and 15 grant permission for use of facilities and school activities. Item 16 approves district field trips. 17 approves training for district staff. 18 approves professional development activities. Item 19 approves the elementary, middle, and high school handles for the 2015-16 school year. Item 20 through 23 grant permission to establish an ESL parent bilingual advisory committee and approves ESL teachers and aides to facilitate and translate meetings during the 2015-16 school year. Item 24 approves the use of 2013 Danielson Framework and accompanying rubrics for certificated staff evaluation in the 2015-16 school year. Item 25 approves address codes established by each school and district for the 2015-16 school year. Item 26 authorizes and approves the submission of the revised QSA district improvement plan as per NJAC 6A colon 30 dash 5 dash 4. Item 27 approves the superintendent's determination and actions taken for all reported incidences of harassment, intimidation, and bullying discussed on the June 22nd, 2015 regular board meeting. Mr. President, I move curriculum instruction, items 1 through 27, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudeck?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes, but I abstain on, on number 17.
Mrs. Ormon?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Viviana. Management operations, Mrs. Hudeck.
Thank you, Mr. President. The management operations committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, presents the following motion, 40 motions, to the Linden Board of Education Board of Education. Number 1 is the passing of a retired employee, Dr. Overtose.
Thank you, Mrs. Hudeck. Janet Menendez worked for the Linden Board of Education for 32 years as a physical education teacher. She retired on July 1st, 2002. Uh, behalf of the Linden School District, I'd like to offer our most heartfelt sympathy to our family, and I didn't know I thought she was, uh, with her and family during this time.
Thank you. Number 2 is the following retirement of the employee listed, Dr. Overtose.
Thank you, Mrs. Hudeck. Uh, Mr. Campbell, Rhonda Campbell worked for the Linden Board of Ed as a special education teacher. She spent her entire career at Linden High School, uh, for 22 years. Uh, I wanna thank her publicly for her passion and dedication to the students and families in Linden, and wish her all the best in her retirement.
Thank you. Number 3 is the resignation for the, um, following staff. Number 4 and number 4 are amend, uh, board action on past management operations as reports as listed. Um, numbers 5, 16, 17, 18, 19, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 32, 33, 35, 36, 37, and 39 are all appointments. Number 6 is the transfer of staff. Number 7 is our leave vacances. And number 9 is to approve the district goals for the 2015-16 school year. Number 10 is to approve the updated Linden Public School organizational chart. Number 11 is to approve the superintendent's merit goals for the 2015-16 school year. Number 12 is to approve the submission of waiver application to the New Jersey Department of Education to permit substitute credentialing before notification of criminal history review is received. Number 13 is to compensate staff listed for unused 2014-15 vacation days at Frigini Marine. Number 14 is to compensate staff listed for unused vacation and sick days upon retirement as per negotiated contract. Number 15 is to compensate staff listed for unused vacation day buyback as per negotiated contract. Number 20 is to retroactively approve the following extended school year power professionals to work as substitute teachers for the extended school year. Number 21 is to approve the conduct, uh, approval to conduct a ninth-grade freshman orientation program at Linden High School on Wednesday, August 19th, 2015. Uh, number 22 is to appoint the following staff for curriculum writing at the contractual Number 31 is to approve funding for staff with Title 1A, Title 2A, and Title 3 as follows. And number 34 is to approve the following teach therapists for their participation in IEP direct follow-up training on July 28th, 2015, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 at the contractual rate. Number 38 is to approve the following revised doc descriptions. And, Mr. President, I am delighted to report you, and respectfully ask for a second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudeck?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes, except I abstain on item 7 and 15.
Mrs. Ormon?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Hudeck. Support operations, Mrs. Overtose.
Thank you, Mr. President. The support operations committee, upon recognition of superintendent of schools and the business administrative board secretary, present the following 37 finance motion and three facilities motions to the Board of Education for approval. Items 1 through 4 are regular board visits dealing with the acceptance of the business administrative board secretary certifications that are due on June 30th, 2015. Board secretaries for the month of June 2015. Financial reports, authorization for payments of salaries and supplemental payroll for July 2015, and draw warrants in the amount specified in favor of person's name and a list of transfers and adjustments for the month of June. Item 5 is to amend board action on past support operations, uh, financial report, May, item 48, and June, item 21 and 41. Items 6 through 9 accept funds in the amount of $4,000 from the Italian American Committee on, uh, Education Grant for Italian Program for the 14-15 school year. Funds, uh, to accept funds for the PNA Overtose EDD Superintendent's Scholarship Fund, $25 from Target Thanks Billion Teacher Appreciation Program for the National School Vibe, the donation of 13 half-size cellos donated by WT Music through Jessica Moore's Girl Scout Gold Award Musical Recycling Event District Y. Items 10 through 21 are to approve payment in the amount of $26,662 to the New Jersey School Boards Association for membership dues for the 15-16 school year, $20,140 to St. Elizabeth's Hungary for utility costs as further negotiated contract executed in July 2014, $9,100 to University of Allen's Drawaway for the relocation of the Science Resource Center to the Linden Academy of, from the Linden Academy of Science and Technology to leased property, $5,588 to ERM Inc., Air One for environmental support, for McMathis to include VAT, uh, summer 2015, $7 to Genesis Education Services, Jamesburg, for a New York Kid two-way export import third-party software interfaces for the 15-16 school year. A change order free in the amount of, uh, $14,170 credit with ER Barrett for the Linden High Roof Replacement Project, a contract in the amount of $45,000 with Copia Interactive LLC for the 15-16 school year for online content management services. Contract in the amount of $23,931 with Nicholson Corporation, Union Beach, to furnish and install lockers at McMathis, uh, with pricing based off the Millsix Regional Ed Services Commission Cooperative Pricing. Retroactively approve a contract with Xerox for a 16-month lease to quit at school aid, enter into a lease agreement with Mail Finance, Neo Post, USA Hill for Connecticut, providing new equipment for the district in the amount not to exceed $10,000 annually for three years. A contract, um, renewal with Genesis Ed Services of Jamesburg provides information system for the 15-16 school year, total not to exceed $40,000. A contract with Blackboard Content from Oaks, California, to provide voice broadcasting merch and notification services for the 15-16 school year, not to exceed $14,000. Items 22 through 26 are to approve the renewal of a project's special yearly maintenance plan in the amount of $6,800 with Computer Consulting Group in Boyton Beach, Florida, which includes software upgrades, telephone support, 32 users coverage for the school year, uh, for the period from July 1st, 15, to June 30th, 16. Networks and More Inc., item 9. Networks and More Inc., Island, Nice, Jersey, for email archiving services and web hosting from 15-16. Total not to exceed $4,900 for the National Weather Station LLC, Titoboro Airport, provide tailored meteorological support during the 15-16 school year. Total not to exceed $1,300. Retroactively approve contract with the Middlesex Regional Ed Services Commission for transportation services in the 14-15 school year for special ed students. A contract with the Middlesex Regional Ed Services Commission for transportation services for the 15-16 school year for special ed students. Item 27 is to approve transportation to and from Developmental Learning Center warrant for a period from July 1 through 2/30/2016 for student PK at a birthday rate of $222.95 with KNS Transportation Pass. Approve the enrollment of the following student for the 15-16 year school year eligible on a tuition basis in the amount of $3,200 on the policy 5118. Authorize the business administrator board secretary to submit the secretaries and trustees' report for the period ending June 30, 2015, to the executive Union County Superintendent of Schools. Item 30 is to approve the following resolution increasing the bid thresholds for districts with a qualified purchasing agent from $36,000 to $40,000. Item 31 is approve the bridge threshold for quoted unanticipated and parental student transportation contracts at $18,800 effective July 1, 2015, through June 30, 2017. Item 32 is approve the following resolution authorizing art color schools to include the cost of meals provided within the annual tuition rate charged to the students for the 15-16 school year. Item 33 is to approve payment to all about a network, Winter Park, Florida, for latel pens in the amount not to exceed $500 prior to bill sales. 34 is to approve payment in the amount of $440 to via Xerox for transfer of Xerox Color Cube model from the Linden Academy of Science to the Science Resource Center. 35, approve school bus emergency evacuation jewelry ports for the 14-15 school year. 36 is to declare the following items as surplus equipment, obsolete, and or unusable, both in accordance with district policy. And 37, accept funds in the amount of $425,000 from the 21st Central Community Learning Center grant awards for the 15-16 school year. There's three items in facilities. Item 1 is to amend board action on past support operations from last month, item 6. And item 2 is use facilities at surface charge as requested by N-LAR's Eddie Supervisor of Music and Fine Arts. And item 3 is to approve submission to the executive county, Union County Superintendent for change of use at school 2 for next year. Mr. President, if there are any other questions or further professional move, items 1 through 37 on the finance agenda and all due to the amount. So this agenda for approval, and respectfully see the second.
Second. All in, roll call.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Huda?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ormon?
Yes.
Mr. Tapleski?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Tapleski. Planning and policy, Mrs. Ormon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under the look of the, the planning and policy, the committee of recommendation of the superintendent of schools, present the following policies for first and second reading to incorporate the features required by court and law and to elaborate on local district policy. First reading, we have policy 6147.1, Evaluation of Individual Student Performance. It's been revised to add a timeline for parental notification of a student refusing to test. And for second reading, we have policy 3542, School Food Service Program. It's been revised to clarify a common issue related to A-1796, S-2000 Bill, which was signed into law on February 5, 2015. Mr. President, those are my two policies, so I respectfully...
Second.
Roll call, please. Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Huda?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ormon?
Yes.
Mr. Tapleski?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes. Saying that there are no reports of the special committee or delegates, we will pass those agenda items and go right into any unfinished business.
Mr. President, do we make a final decision August 31st for the meeting with evaluation and...
Well, since you want to just jump ahead of the...
Yeah.
Any board member comments or new business?
Yeah, I have to make a comment.
Mr. Tapleski.
At the end of June, I was able to attend the ISTE conference in Philadelphia along with Dr. Robotosi, Mrs. Cleary, Mr. Walters, and I believe three...
Catline.
Yeah, Catline, Stevens, and Hamilton. It's, we're very fortunate when that conference comes to the East Coast, especially as close because you can send more people. For a school district like ours, which has decided to get heavily into computers and the computer use, it is extremely useful. The other, I spent also my time on the floor. I did go to the keynote speech on Sunday night with Dr. Robotosi. But one of the interesting things that they, that they talk about there was the fact that certain students don't have the available, the accessibility to technology, computers, especially in areas that are economically deprived. And they felt that diversity is very important, and that those students are suffering as a result. And, you know, Dr. Robotosi and I just kind of looked at each other and said, yeah, well, we do it. So, you know, we can understand the advantage that we're giving our students by, by having our one-to-one program. It's going to help a lot of the kids that come from homes that are not as financially able to provide for their children as other homes. There were, there's a lot of new stuff out there, and, and we did have a discussion afterwards that we need to make sure that we send people more frequently because the things that we saw, there was a robot that was that big, a little tiny robot, like a line tracing robot, but you could program it too. And programming, I think, is going to be part of the requirements for students, coding for students. And the little guy was 60 bucks. So you could get a robot and all this extra stuff, and you could have them do all kinds of crazy stuff on the table for 16, just hold it up against the computer and have programs up. It was unbelievable. I mean, some of the things that were there, and the fact that as a board member, as a superintendent, you don't get to see those things. And so whenever it's economically feasible, I think we need to make sure that we send people. That concludes my report.
Mr. Tapleski. Mrs. Viviana?
Thank you, Mr. President. Even though it's summertime, I want to commend several of our student organizations. The Linden ROTC, which is our high school students, are volunteering within the community during the summer. This is on their own time. Some will receive credit hours once the organizations notify the schools that they have been out there working. But these students are showing up at the library to volunteer. They're showing up at community cleanups. They're at the American Legion. They're also at the grave sites, assisting with flag placements or making sure that the veteran grave sites are taken care of. And again, these are students that are volunteering their own time during the summer to come and take care of our community. We also have a group of about 15 students that are currently in Italy on a volunteer basis. These students are over there as educators. They are teaching the Italian elementary schools to speak English during the mornings, and in the afternoons, they are taking Italian classes. Again, these students had to volunteer after school here in Linden to put together lesson plans that they would be using in Italy this summer. And they're over there in, some of these students didn't even take Italian here in Linden. They've taken French, they've taken German, they've taken Spanish. So they're in homes that there is a language barrier, but they're there to teach. And I have to commend these students as well. They're, some of them, it's the first time being out of the community. They're in another country on their own. They're with three volunteer teachers of ours that are there as well. But again, these, these students are over there to teach, not just to, to explore. It's not a regular exchange program. So I want to commend them as well for being volunteers and for doing this over in Italy. I commend them.
Thank you, Mrs. Ormon.
There's the two comments. I would like to express my deepest condolences to the family of Janet Menendez. I had the privilege of knowing her and being taught by her, not only in gym, but also as a cheerleader. She was my very first cheerleading coach in this school district. So my deepest condolences to her family. I mean, I also know on a personal level, she'd be definitely missed. And then also, just a special thank you to the board and the district, as well as the teachers and staff that came out and expressed their condolences last month in the passing of my father. I was just overwhelmed and just, 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 as I say, just overfilled with the love and support and the condolences that everybody, from Dr. Robotosi to the secretary of, to the teachers and staff. I didn't realize that my dad knew so many people. And even those that he did not know, you guys came out to support and to show me your care and your love. And I just want to say, thank you so much. He was a wonderful guy, the kindest person that I've ever met, would do anything for anyone. And that's the legacy that he left, and that's something that we want to carry on as his children, the spirit of kindness. And my motto, one of my mottos is, be kind in all you say and do. Don't be mean, because mean doesn't pay off. So thank you once again, everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Ormon. Anyone else? Okay, just a couple of things. As Dr. Robotosi mentioned before, for the high school graduation, I also would like to commend you and the rest of the staff and the principal of the high school and their vice principals for a very well-planned out day. I think everything went off without any problems, and it was an enjoyment to be at graduation again. And again, pleased to pass on to everyone else on the job well done. Also, as Dr. Robotosi stated, our regular scheduled board meeting was for August 24th, 2015. Our meeting has now been switched to August 31st, 2015, 6:00 p.m. here in the board conference room. So instead of October 20, sorry, August 24th, it will be August 31st at 6:00 p.m. Any other board member comments? I will now open this up, the floor, to public comments. Members of the public desiring to make public comment may come forward at this time. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficiency and orderly operation of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on one item for three minutes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion and ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeesh.